It is five thirty. On the eighteenth of March, two thousand and twenty-one, we are in the Cache County School Board Room, and welcome everyone. We will get our meeting started with Roll Call.
Larry Jepson, Board Member.
Rattle Bagley, Board Member.
Steve Norton, Superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, Board Member.
Terry Rhodes, Board Member.
Kathy Christensen, Board Member.
I'm Dale.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Chris Corcoran, Board Member, is excused. Jeff Nielsen, Board Member, is excused.
Dale Hanson, Business Administrator.
Thank you. And Kathy will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you, Kathy. For our recognitions, the recognitions portion of our meeting, we will recognize the Teachers of the Year from Green Canyon, North Cache, Millville, and Mountainside. At Green Canyon, we would like to recognize Mariah Chekets, who is ESL Science and Spanish Teacher. At North Cache, we recognize Kelly Christensen, who is the Resource Teacher there. At Millville Elementary, we recognize Carol, help me Gary.
De Malanta.
De Malanta, who is the Resource Teacher there. And at Mountainside Elementary, we recognize Kim Turnbow, who is the third, a third grade teacher at Mountainside. We express great thanks and appreciation to these teachers for all of their service to the students of our district and also their peers who have selected them for this honor. And we'll wait to see if Dale has any public input. No public input. So we'll move to our consent agenda, and I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Dale. Moving on to our action agenda, we, the first item there is a request for approval on the increased procurement thresholds presented by Scott Rigby. Do you have anything you want to add from two weeks ago?
No, I just wondered if you had any other questions that I could answer.
Anyone? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the increase in procurement thresholds.
I move that we approve the increased procurement threshold measure.
I second.
Any, uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Next, we have the, oops.
I was gonna say, all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Well, mine was unanimous, so I assumed that everyone else's would be. Sorry. Next, uh, next on our action agenda, we have a request for the approval of the North Cache Middle School, School Land Trust Plan Amendment. Since Principal John is not here, I assume Mike will answer any questions that we have. Does anyone have questions or discussion before we vote on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve this amendment.
I move to approve the North Cache Middle Schools, uh, School Lands Trust Plan Amendment.
I second it.
All in favor? Dale is clicking away.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Moving right along, our third item on the action agenda is a request for approval of the Cache High Student Club for eSports. Any questions, discussion?
I think it's just very important that they work very closely with Tim and his folks so that we do this right from the beginning.
Do you have anything you want to add, Tim, from two weeks ago?
Just that I noticed that the House Secretary of Transportation is, uh, that one of the sports that would be the same, and so he may need this time to be drawn to the way now.
Okay. Um, I'll take a motion to approve the Cache High eSports Club.
I move that we approve the Cache High eSports Club.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll vote.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Excellent. Our last item on the action agenda is a consideration of authorizing issuance of up to seventy million dollars in general obligation refunding bonds. So is Ryan presenting or Preston presenting?
Yeah, so this is what we reviewed last time regarding a possible refunding of the two thousand and fourteen bond series. And so we've had Ryan Bjorky of Chapman and Cutler, who's our, our Bond Counsel, draft the resolution that, uh, it's called the Parameters Resolution, basically. So we've, I'd like to turn the time to Ryan, maybe just to review that quickly, everything that's contained in that, and what that actually represents by the board taking action on approving that resolution.
Is that the draft that we have on the Board Doc's file?
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you. It's nice to be up here. Um, I mentioned to Preston this morning, it feels like I'm actually coming out of hibernation. To actually come out and visit people again. Uh, I will admit, though, I did get in a little trouble from my wife, uh, because one of our favorite little places to eat is up here, and she's figuring that I'm stopping on my way home. So please don't tell her that I am planning on it. So you do have before you this, uh, resolution authorizing the issuance of up to seventy million dollars of general obligation refunding bonds. Those bonds would be issued to refund portions of your Series two thousand and fourteen bonds that you've issued. That can be done partially for debt savings, and I think a little bit for restructuring of some of your debt as well. The resolution here delegates the authority to finalize the terms of the bond, bonds to your, to designated officers, being your Business Administrator or Superintendent. Um, and that would happen when we actually finalize the pricing of the bonds, so they don't come back to you for authority. But it sets certain parameters for them to follow, and as long as they're within those parameters, they can issue the bonds. The bond, it's contemplated that the bonds may be issued in one or more series. Uh, and we've done that to give you some flexibility in case there are any changes, uh, in federal tax law over the next little bit. Right now, you can only issue these bonds as taxable bonds, but there is a chance that that would change, and you could do tax exempt, and it could produce additional savings. I just wanted to highlight a few other things for your consideration. And that is, we've, with this flexibility we've built in, we've also built in flexibility in how you sell the bonds. Generally, you've gone out to the public market to do that. But in this case, we, since we have potentially multiple series of bonds, we also built in, uh, an option for a private placement, uh, if a bank wanted to come in and buy some of these bonds. And what we've seen sometimes is these banks require that you have a default rate, um, separate and apart from the normal interest rate. So if you've noticed in there, in Section two point four, you may have seen an eighteen percent interest rate. And that's just a contingency if there's a bank that buys these that requires a default rate. Now, the likelihood that you would ever default on these bonds is, um, I, I already see shaking of heads. It's, um, not gonna happen. Um, so it's not a big risk for you, but it is something that's sometimes required. And it often gives you the best rate, uh, by having the bank with the lowest rate able to buy the bonds. Um, so that's something you haven't seen before, and I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Uh, otherwise, this, um, resolution contains all the provisions necessary for the issuance of the bonds uh, when the time is right, and, um, you decide to move forward. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of a high overview of the resolution. And I know, I think Preston already talked to you about a lot of these terms as well.
Ryan, is there, um, what advantage would we have of having, of issuing the bonds privately rather than publicly?
Sometimes when you get a, a little bit of a smaller size of bonds, um, and that's why when we have multiple series, there's a chance that you save some until later. It would save you some costs because you, uh, don't have to produce some of the offering documents and other things. You don't have to go for ratings. And a lot of times, these banks will, uh, provide really competitive rates. Uh, and Preston can speak a little bit better to the rates than I can. But sometimes it's just a little bit of an advantage to you, uh, to do that private placement. And, and that's something that Preston will discuss with Dale, uh, and make sure what's in your best interest. Uh, but it's just to give you flexibility. Uh, it doesn't say that you have to do it that way, it's just to give you the option.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'll take a motion to approve this, uh, resolution.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of up to seventy million dollars general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay, any other, anyone think of a question yet? Okay, we'll vote.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Woohoo! So Ryan, I have a question now. Where are you going for dinner after this?
It's actually gonna be breakfast, it's gonna be breakfast.
Oh, and you didn't bring your wife?
She had a little cry.
Okay.
I also have a question. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Norwegian.
Oh, what's the nationality?
It's Norwegian.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, reports agenda, monthly financial report, Dale.
You might, you guys don't have to stay in. This is the point where Dale won't be offended.
Okay. So you do have the monthly financial report for the period ending February twenty-eighth, and the report itself, I mean, there's a few little things you can pick out from it, just showing, for example, that, uh, property tax collections, and this will be back on the detailed part of it, uh, where we've collected eighty-four percent of the budgeted amount of property tax as of the end of February. Compared to a year ago, where we had collected seventy-eight point one percent of the total property taxes collect for the year, uh, just showing that the current budget is, is strong. And we went through last month showing that salaries and benefits are, are all budgeting well all the way through that. But the thing I really wanted to just focus on, on this report, unless you have any questions with that, was that we have recently just completed the, the legislative session. And the legislature was very good to public ed. A year ago, they were great to us, and then bottom fell out of everything when, uh, March sixteenth rolled around a year ago, and, and, uh, but they still even then treated us well compared to other entities in the state with the one point eight percent increase in, in funding that we did receive then. And most other state agencies didn't get anything, or even some had a reduction. But, uh, for this, this coming year, for FY twenty-two, there's actually a seven percent increase in, in funding as a combination of growth and an increase in the weighted pupil unit. So they did increase the value of the weighted pupil unit by five point nine percent. And, uh, and that's an attempt, I think, to try to recapture, well, to make good, really, on what they were trying to do a year ago. And we thought they might spread that over a couple of years, but they were actually able to do that all in one year, so, so that'll be nice. It does show then that the total minimum school program was increased by eight point two percent. That includes the, the increased value of the weighted pupil unit and everything else, but expands it a little bit larger. And that for the total public education budget is set at six point one billion dollars. So all in all, we're gonna do very well, and there wasn't a lot of, of education bills that were presented throughout the session. So there weren't a lot of adjustments that we're gonna have to make with programs and different things for the, for the most part. Anyway, it's gonna be a, a good year, I think, for next year. There'll still be some more COVID relief funds coming in. There's a third, um, S R grant that's supposed to be coming around, and, and that will be available here for next year. There's been questions as to when we'll know how much that'll be. But there's a, there's a, a rule in the state code that if, uh, if an appropriation is over a million dollars, it has to be approved by the legislature before it can be allocated out to the districts. And so this, this last go-around is almost seventy billion dollars, I think sixty-eight billion dollars that's coming in. And so they've got to wait until there's a special session called by the legislature to allocate those funds to stay within their law. And, uh, after that, then they can notify districts how much they'll receive and, because the legislature may make changes on what it can be used for. It's what we ran into the, the last go-around, where we had all submitted applications. We ended up having to redo those because the legislature changed what, what it could be used for. And that could possibly happen on this, this third go-around. So, um, we haven't heard yet if and when that plan, that session is being scheduled. But, uh, that's when we'll know at least more on, on that last, or that third set of COVID reduction, or COVID relief fund, so. Anyway, um, that's kind of my report, unless you had any questions.
So on the, uh, revenue under the general fund, there's a tuitions line that has five hundred times what the budget was.
Yeah, as a percentage, that looks kind of scary. Uh, I mean, excellent, I should say.
Well, not scary, because it's revenue.
Yeah, it's really good. Um, yeah, it's showing that we have five hundred and twelve percent of budget received. But in reality, looking at last year, it's actually fifty thousand less than we had received at this same point in time then.
So what is that?
I think the biggest part is the preschool program on that, and I think they have it budgeted for the, the local tuition for kids attending that.
So do parents pay that?
Yes.
Okay, that's why it's under local and not state. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's not for the, uh, you know, the self-contained students that are in preschool, but it's the regular ed kids that are in there.
Okay.
So.
Excellent.
And that's the difference for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions for Dale? All right, thank you, Dale. Um, Board Member member reports, Roger.
Okay, uh, we have the Utah High School Athletics Association meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth next week. Uh, we will be voting on the emerging sports, boys volleyball, girls cheer, and eSports. We met virtually Tuesday, uh, talked about eSports. There's quite a bit of concern about the fee waivers, and we don't know what that's gonna be for eSports, Mike, right? What's gonna come up there? Uh, and you'll find out that eSports is an expensive one, and we don't know how that's gonna work, so I don't know how the vote will turn out on Thursday of next week. Of all the emails that I've received in the last few weeks, there's a high support of boys volleyball. Now, I know the administrators did a survey this week, and they came up with they did not want boys volleyball. Three to one? So I don't know how that's gonna turn out. We'll have discussion on Thursday. I don't know how I'll vote. Uh, if I listen to my, to the patrons, I would say we had to vote to support it, but I don't, we'll wait and see what. We have quite a bit of competition with, uh, Utah County, uh, Salt Lake City area. So I don't know what we'll come up with there, but I have one vote out of sixteen, so we'll see what happens, but we'll discuss that. The other thing is, uh, my term on the Board of Trustees expires June thirtieth. And the way I understand it, we will nominate someone. We can nominate someone from our district or when they'll run again. We used to do it at the, uh, State School Board meeting. So, did you get an email, Terry, about nominating anyone? So, is there anyone that wants to be nominated for, to serve on the Board of Trustees?
Okay, help me to understand, because it's a lot smaller board than it used to be.
So it must be a bigger region.
And you're representing?
Our region.
Are, you're representing for a three A, four A?
Three A, four A.
And for how large a region?
For, it'll be, so we'll be representing, uh, our di- our district and the ones down in...
Okay, so you have, it's only those two?
So it'll just be the...
Washington and that.
Washington and this area, so.
So it's our U H S A A region? No, because that's...
No, it's that, but it's...
Because we have, Region Four is the smallest region now. We only have...
We only have schools from Washington and Cache.
So.
And Logan.
And Logan, so.
So are, is the other position, are there two positions, right, from that category, or just one?
Well, there's only one school board position which represents both.
So you've gotta run against that, somebody down there comes in.
Right, right. So, I don't know, uh, how it ends up, but, uh, we can nominate someone, and then I don't know how they're gonna vote, because they'll have to send it out to the board members, because it is chosen by the school board members, so.
So can you, can you do, do that job again, if you wanted?
I don't know if I can or not. I don't...
It's usually, the selection's made at a meeting at the annual conference, right, in January?
Right.
And Jeff Klop is there to usually...
Take care of it.
Take care of that, so he hasn't said how that's gonna happen?
He just said that we'd be nominating at the March meeting, so that's next week.
Okay.
So, if we wanna nominate someone else, uh, I don't know.
Do you wanna do it again?
If I can, I can do it again, but I don't know if we can re-do it again. I thought we had to run our term, and then they chose someone else. I might be...
What, what is the term? Four years, six years, eight years?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
But I will find out for sure and go from there. But that will be happening next week. So do you have any recommendations how you would like me to vote? I know I sent out a questionnaire to you. You want more information on eSports. My opinion is, we need to wait and see what fee waivers will do for it, and that's down the road a ways. Patrons want boys volleyball. And I haven't received one email about girls cheer, but I know some of them want it, so.
If, if we, um, have a boys volleyball team, then do we have to have another sport for girls to equal it out, or?
It just depends on how Title IX is gonna affect. I don't know how that'll work. We'll see. So I'll know more next week. But I'll, they already have the information from the principals. You sent that down that you might. So we'll go from there and have a discussion. So, we'll see.
All right, thanks for representing us, Roger. And then I asked Kathy to give us a, a report about her interviews with Caitlin...
Oh, Caitlin.
Martindale, who gave us, um, public input at our last meeting. So she and Mike have been working on that, so Kathy.
Okay, so Mike, you might have to help me out here a little bit. Um, we haven't really actually interviewed Caitlin, but after Caitlin came, and I thought she did a great job, uh, she was very, uh, prepared and very competent, and I was very impressed by her presentation. But when it was over, I had no idea what she was trying to change about the dress code. And, um, I assumed that she was wanting to change the dress code for the type of, um, shirts and shorts and skirts that you could wear. And, um, so that was kind of how I was viewing the situation. And then, um, she emailed Mike asking, what have you decided? And I guess all of us got that email, right? And then Ca- Terry asked us, asked if I would represent the board and, uh, work with Mike to come up with a plan. So I started out by writing a letter to her, and I didn't send it, I just sent it on to Mike. And in the meantime, um, he had figured that it would be good to have Caitlin take her, um, issue to the school community council and let them decide at North Cache, because no other school is complaining about the dress code. It's just students at North Cache right now. So I still didn't know what her issue was, and then Mike found out she just wants the whole dress code dropped. And, um, so, um, I'm not in favor of that, but, um, I will tell you that I did attend a school community council up at North Cache already, where they talked about dress code. And there was one mom who was totally into enforce it the way it's written, and another mom who was, no, we don't need to enforce everything, um, so stringently. So there's different opinions up there. And there were two male teachers who were in favor of the dress code. So, um, I don't know what will happen with that discussion. And Mike, is she gonna present up at North Cache, or don't you know? Okay. Okay. So one thing that I did suggest was that in the dress code where it says that the shorts and skirts should be knee-length, that maybe we ought to update that and just put arms-length, because that's pretty much what kids are wearing mostly. If we can get them to do it at arms-length, that's pretty good. So that's where we are right now, unless you have something more to add, Mike.
So I did take the current policy, I guess this is on, I did take the current policy. And there was about four changes that if you look at it, because there were some things in there that says must do this, must do that, and softened some language up in that. And then I did, uh, put in the suggestion of what Kathy was saying, arms-length. And then I sent it out to the principals and said, okay, well, how do you guys feel about if we soften the policy similar to this? And what came back was very interesting, because every, every one of those principals said, arms-length, if you do that to different women, it can, it can be a mini, mini skirt, or it can be near the knee. And they actually had their secretaries in the office stand up and, and put their hands down and see where would that, where would that be? And Terry Cutler stopped some girls in the halls and just said, you know, just put your hand, they were nervous about. And Terri Cutler stopped some girls in the halls and just said, you know, just put your hand, they were nervous about, um, the, your hands length. You know, arms length on that. And so I was working with Brittany a little bit, and we, we've come up with the wording nearer the knee. Should be worn, it doesn't say must be, now it says should be worn nearer the knee. They felt a lot more comfortable with that, saying that. And so I'm just kinda waiting now to see what happens at the school community council, then maybe bringing it to the board to update our current policy to just soften up a few words in that.
Does, does anybody have any comments or suggestions about the dress code?
So I couldn't hear very well when I was at Ridgeline, but was she also talking about the shorts, the pants that have... I would say they were wore out, but my wife would argue with me there.
Yeah, my grandkids wear those, and I say, do you know you have all these holes in your pants? The policy states, and I think it covers it, it just says, you have to wear clothing where no undergarments are being shown. And kids are pretty careful about that. The holes are strategically placed to where there's none of that showing. And I don't know if we wanna get any farther than what the policy says on it. And what I'll do is email out to you the, the policy again, just where we've kinda put some draft words into it. So you can see the district policy on it, and then you can consider that. Because what I don't wanna do is create an environment where administrators have to be walking around with a measuring tape or, or whatever we might do.
Well, especially since there hasn't been a lot of controversy about the policy, other than North Cash.
Yeah, that's the only place where it's bubbling, is, is there.
Well, we also don't wanna remove all of the guidelines. I think that's, I don't know, we have two former principals, well, you're a former principal, we have some former principals here. So, so is it, is it helpful to have those guidelines, those...
Oh, yes.
Barriers, those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the way it's written, there's the general guidelines from the district, but then the policy also, also states that a school with board approval can even make them a little strength, more stringent. But they have to come in and talk to the board about that, if they wanna make it a little bit tighter.
All right, well, thank you both for following up on that, and I guess we'll hear more about it in April. As far as the Board President Report. Our USBA Spring Regional Meetings, you should have all received an email from Richard with links to get on whichever meeting you can get on, to participate in that. The importance of those meetings is to hear the legislative, or how the legislative changes will affect education for the next few years, and to start the process for our Delegate Assembly Legislative Priorities List. And so, but we also need Delegate Assembly nominees, and I can go representing our board, because I have to be there anyway. But we also need two at-large delegates from our region, and I have had no response to the email that I sent out. No one wants to volunteer for that position. So if any of you are willing, that would be great. If not, we'll have less delegates this year, I guess.
So who are the ones we have right now? Chris, from us, right?
No, me, from us. And then normally we would like the USBA voting, I mean, the UHSA voting. We would do the Delegate Assembly voting in our annual meeting with our, just our region together. And, you know, that's the, that's the nominations where everyone's nominating the people they don't like in the room. And then hurrying to close nominations, so that they can't, anyway. So, but that obviously didn't happen, so now we're trying to figure out who, which two people from our region, Cash, Logan, Rich, will go as the at-large delegates.
So I think there was a gentleman from Rich County, right, and then Christie, um...
Cooley. Christie Cooley.
Christie Cooley, who had been before, but they're the last ones.
Last year.
Would it be good to check and see if they're interested in running again or being?
Dale Lamborn's emailed to me when I sent out the email about nominees and spring regional meetings getting all together. He said, our board's not coming and we're not interested in serving as delegates. I said, oh, okay.
So Chris went last year, right?
Well, it was, it was, it was a hybrid meeting, so you could either be there in person or join on Zoom, and Chris joined on Zoom.
Well, I would suggest Chris.
Okay, I'll ask him.
And Terry, if I'm needed, I'm always willing to go.
Yeah, you've been before.
I've been there four times, and so I thought others might want a chance to do it.
Apparently not.
You know the ropes.
Well, you'd think with all of the new board members that they have in Logan's school district, that somebody there would want to come, want to go. I'll contact, oh, Larry, what's his last name, Olson?
Williams.
Williams, at Logan, and see if he has any suggestions for someone from their board to go. And so if you're all okay with it, I'm not changing the school land trust plan assignments that, that are already posted on Board Doc. So you're all okay with that? To read those same plans, okay? Mike, do we have a date yet when those are gonna be, when the website's gonna be up, so they can post them? All right. We'll, we'll just hang tight then. Any concern, or we need to talk about graduation assignments pretty soon? Anyone have certain requests of schools you want to attend, or does it matter? Shall I just assign them?
Yeah.
Okay, our next hybrid board meeting, we have one the first week of January and one, no, February, and one the first week of March.
First of April, you're talking.
So that would be, yeah, the first of, well, either the first of April or the first of May. And we have four people that we didn't hear from at Ridgeline who would like to be heard. So I told them in email that we would be in the south end of the valley again, before the end of the school year, so... We need to choose a school to do that at and, and a date. Any thoughts?
What about South Cash?
I was just going to say that.
Okay. I'll contact Principal Snow and see if that works for him, what, first of April, first of May?
Well, I think we should do the first of May, so we can take care of this other.
Okay.
Because I think this, we should be here for that, won't you?
Yep, okay. All right. And then regarding the announcement of position for a business administrator, we're trying not to feel like Dale is a traitor, but understand that everyone at some point needs to get on with their lives. And I find it interesting that the three former educators on this board say that it's different, that no one complained about them retiring than you retiring. Anyway, we, as a board, if we are gonna act as the selection committee for this position, I'd like to know your thoughts about whether we should act as the selection committee or delegate that to someone else. Larry? Randall, you tell me, while Larry thinks...
I think that we should do it as a board.
How has it been done before?
It was forty years ago once I did it. No one knows.
How, how were you selected?
Yeah, when they did it last time, there was, as I remember, there was about seven or eight on the committee. I think there was one or two board members, superintendent was on there, couple of principals. And I remember it was an all-day affair. It went from eight in the morning till four at night. And it involved more than just oral interviews, it was doing projects and that, just to see how they could manipulate data and whatever, to, to use different tools that we have. It was kind of an interesting process. I don't know what they're, you'd like to do this time.
Do we have a template of what went on? Managed?
That was a long time ago. I don't have it, but we could probably contact other districts that have recently hired VAs.
Create a scorecard?
That was my hesitation. I think we need to have some people, I have two sons that are CPAs, and they speak a different language. And we need some people there that can speak that language.
Well, Dale will be there.
And know.
Right, you'll be there?
If you'd like me to, I will.
Generally, that's not the case. The past administrator or business administrator or superintendent are not involved in hiring a new person. So Dale can, you can do it any way you want, I'm just telling you. Custom history dictates that he or I, whenever you go for that situation, would give you input before the process starts, but after it starts, you wouldn't be a member of. Now, you, you can do it any way you want, but I'm just telling you, that's practice.
Does Richard, is he ever involved?
Yeah, Richard helped agenda as we went through creating this book. And he certainly is a, is somebody who we can rely on, but he's not...
He can't help in the hiring.
Yeah.
Just kinda help in the organizing?
Yeah.
Um, would it be, would it be a good idea to have a special meeting of the board to come together? We can do this because it's a personnel issue, and so it wouldn't be, have to be a published, public meeting. We can have a, because I asked Richard about that, and I read the code. And we can have a meeting as a full board and talk about the questions we would have on the scorecard, and how we would do the interviews and all of that sort of thing. Is there any interest in doing that before April first?
Well, you say April first is not that critical.
I think the applications are due on the second of April. And from there on out, it's, it's very fluid, however the board would like to structure it. It was kinda hoping that maybe it could, interviews could actually be conducted during the, the week after spring break sometime, in time for the board to make a decision and announcement on the, what day is that in April? It's the second board meeting, probably the fifteenth or something, whatever that is.
It's the fifteenth, Axe Day.
No, they extended it.
Okay, it's not Axe Day, so we can have a board meeting that day.
I think we should sit down before the second and come up with some kind of a template.
Yeah, I agree, and maybe get some feedback from Richard.
To do it the week of the...
Okay. So when do you wanna do that? What works for all of you? Do you wanna keep it on a Thursday? Do you wanna do it next Thursday? Do you wanna... Is another day better?
So are we talking that Richard would come up and help us, or we need to look at his schedule, or was that not part of it?
No.
No, I don't think he...
No, we'll just be deciding who the selection committee, who will be on the selection committee with us, and how we would, what we would put on the scorecard as far as some questions, who's gonna ask questions, who's gonna, what questions we're gonna ask, that sort of thing.
But I think before that, we need to get some input from Richard, as to what he thinks we should have for the interview. Because if it was an all-day thing, I mean, I can't think of anything I, I, I would know to have going all day long.
We, we can get all that information.
That's why, yeah, we can get that information before we, before we get together to discuss this issue.
You just, you just hand them an abacus and see if they know. And then we go up from there.
A slide rule, after that?
Make sure they don't take their shoes off when they're counting, yeah. I think we oughta get, it'd be nice to know what other districts have done in the past here. If we could find out what any ones that have recently hired a business administrator, what their committee was like.
Okay, I'll contact Richard and then talk to some of the other school districts.
And I like the Thursday night.
On the twenty-fifth? Does that work for you, gentlemen?
Same time.
Okay, five thirty? And we'll just meet here? In a closed meeting? Okay, I'll let Chris and Jeff know, so hopefully they'll be here, since they actually do hiring in their regular day jobs.
Right.
And please think about, before next Thursday, think about what you feel is important, and how we could ask questions to find out about these people who will apply. And I won't tell you what Kevin said about minorities and women, and getting the right percentage and all that stuff. But...
You have a lot of the stuff you already have printed in your book, that you've asked the candidates to have and be qualified in. So that could be your guide as to what you wanna find out and the kind of information they have prepared for. Some of that's in there as a guide.
Yep, okay, so we'll look over that and make some notes and come together next Thursday and, and make a plan. There are only two people we ever get to hire, and we can't get it wrong. So don't let that make you stressed, though, right?
Pressure.
Maybe we should call Scott Jackson.
Who?
No, what's his name?
Scott.
Yeah, Scott Jackson, right?
That works with Alan Allred.
Uh-huh.
Or, they, they did work together.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, I don't have much, but I do wanna pass you out this set of papers. And we're just gonna go line by line, so don't worry about how long it's gonna take. Mike, you wanna come and pass, in case somebody, you guys in the audience will look at, wanna look at what we're talking about?
Wow, how many trees did this take? You recycled them for us?
Okay, and the only, you know, I think every once in a while, you kinda need to stop and look at some data that might help you to understand your district you're, we're serving. And so, was this Beaver that put this together, Dale?
Yes.
Beaver School District kinda put this together.
Is this the one they did at last year's annual? Is this the one they did at last year's annual conference?
I don't know, yeah, I think that's an updated version if it was. So we're going to look at just a couple of columns, so keep on the front page. Anytime you have something out, there's always somebody who wants to look at the second page. Roger was already there.
It was smaller, I couldn't read it.
So I think it's just kind of interesting to go across the top and so what they've done is they've got the average class size for the districts and this is self-reported data, so they didn't go into the system, they asked to provide the data.
And it's ordered by total compensation paid?
Yep, you got it all the way over to the far right. There's always somebody who wants to get to the far right too, so that's total employee district paid compensation.
No, I just wanted to.
That's how they're ranked.
I wanted to know what the point of the order was. And that was the only column that showed me.
Okay, so we've got that, so we're just going to look at, I think there's grundles of information on here that you might want to know, but I think there's just a few things that are really glaring, okay? And so you look at the school districts and if we were to list our friends, those are districts that look like us with low market value. You just go down, start with number 23, Wayne, Washington, Provo, Ogden, Buckstelder, Nevel, Jordan, Carbin, Kennick, San Juan, Duchesne, Grand, Chuab and Severe. They're our kindred spirits, they're our cousins. They all try to run school districts without a whole lot of market value behind each kid. So you're looking for outliers. Who are the outliers who have figured out a way, even without a lot of market value, to get listed in, say, the top 15? And so you look, the first one that jumps out at you there is Alpine School District. They have a class size average that's probably the highest across the state. And if you look down the list, we're probably second or third, I can't remember exactly.
Second.
But Tuella has, they're number five there at 1972. So Tuella's really done some nice things recently that have changed that school district. They have to be competitive with the people along the Wasatch Front. So as you look, they have a class size of 19 and they have a starting salary of $50,000 and annual help premiums at almost $21,000 for a total of $86,621. Places them in the top five. You go down to Granite, they're one of our kindred spirits, they don't have a lot of market value and then you get down to Cash at 14. So what I wanted to just kind of point out, if you go over to the 30-year master degree, you'll see that we have one of the higher salaries. If you're in our district and you get education, you're going to be rewarded towards the end of your contract years. And then this doesn't have it, but we've done surveys before in our district. If you stay with us from the beginning to the end, you're going to come out better than most districts in salary and because of that, your retirement will also be better. The other issue is how much do we pay for annual insurance premiums? Part of that's where you're located in the state, how much it costs you to offer a plan. But anyway, when we get all totaled, we're, we come in at about number 14. And I just think that decisions that boards have made over the years have been really beneficial to our employees and although we don't have a lot of resources, we've pretty much put our resources into our employees. And we're not having much market value. We've done some amazing things. I'd like to see if we couldn't get our starting salary up a bit, just because we just need to pay teachers more, period. Doesn't matter that we, we have not the same problem that Tuella does, but our teachers certainly ought to be paid the same as teachers going to Tuella to teach. So I'd like to continue to work on raising that beginning salary. We did it before by just moving everybody up to step five and we might propose in negotiations that we do something similar to that this year. But anyway, I think that's a, that's a great set of data that indicates the priorities that we talked about in our district of taking care of our employees. Second page is a smaller print and there's some information there that helps you to understand what kind of programs they have for health coverage. And then there are a few districts who offered dental insurance premiums. But all in all, I thought, as I looked through this data, I thought, okay, when we say that we put the maximum amount of salary every year we can into salaries, I think this is the data that proves that it's ending up in the hands of classroom teachers in our school district. So that's just kind of what I wanted to cover with you.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah, correct. Dale was going to do that and then I was going to do it. Mike realized, nobody's done it, so we haven't got the total exact number of what it's going to cost to add those 10 additional classrooms, but DWA had thought that we ought to put at least a number out there of 3.5 million. The initial figures coming in are about 2.6. So Ridgeline was 2.3, so in the amount of time that's gone, that's a very marginal increase to finish that and we will be moving ahead with that to postace. In fact, we, we got a call from Green Canyon wondering why is somebody out on our lawn putting up a fence? And Mike said, "I don't have a clue." And so we did a couple of quick calls to Bruce and he said, "Well, DWA is really excited about getting going, but officially, we haven't got everything tied together, but they're started putting up a fence so that they can start construction as soon as possible." So we figured out financially how we can pull this off and we'll get started on it as soon as we can. That'll be the last major project for those two schools as far as getting completion and getting them up to the number that we originally started off and took those 10 classrooms off so that we could afford to build them to begin with, but this will be the final thing for them.
Oh, man, so the new band director's going to have to figure out how to practice a marching band at Oakville. Off from the get-go, wow. That's exciting news, thank you very much.
That is, yeah.
Anything any of you would like to? All right.
If you don't, if you've already got a copy of that and you don't think you need it and you're just going to throw it away, bring it up, it'll save a tree.
The tree's already gone.
Well, it'll save another one for being cut down to print up some new.
We have reached the end of our agenda, so we will adjourn. Thank you all for coming.